Okay, we'll bring this meeting back to order. We'll turn it over to Dennis and Jill.
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 Jill?
Jill.
Jill. Jill, okay, sorry.
No, that's fine.
Well, I know what you're saying, but...
Go ahead.
Good morning.
Mr. McCarthy? You want to hold it down? Mr. McCarthy? Mr. McCarthy? If you need to say something, say it outside.
Pardon?
If you want to say something, say it outside the door.
Speak with me without your finger, please, John.
Good morning, I'm Jill Schluckwin. I'm an attorney in the Lands and Minerals Division of the DNR. And I'm here today to talk about DNR's upcoming nonferrous metallic minerals lease sale. I'm going to speak with you today about the process that DNR goes through when it conducts a sale. Dennis Martin is also here, and he will talk to you about how mineral exploration works. Before we get started, feel free to ask me questions at any time.
Is there gold in those hills? That's what we're looking for.
Well, we've got people out there looking. We've got 35 active leases right now, and...
You're aware of the big operations just north of...
Yes.
They're going west of the wall. We have some property over there, so they must have 350 people working on it.
Yeah, I got a lot.
It's less than a minute now. It's unbelievable.
Good.
So as you probably know, nonferrous metallic minerals are minerals other than tachnite and iron ore. So I'm going to talk, first of all, give you some background about the lease sale process, and then I'll talk to you about the steps that we've gone through to date and some of the upcoming steps in the sale process. Back in 2012, the Executive Council asked that DNR make some changes in its public lease sale process. And the goal of these changes was to give the public more opportunity to have input into the process and to provide better public information. For example, there's now a public input period that's part of the lease sale. This lease sale is the second one to use the new process. Back in 2015 was the first lease sale that was conducted using the new process. The first step that DNR takes when it's considering conducting a lease sale is to contact potential bidders, that is, companies that may be interested in bidding on mineral leases. DNR asks the companies if there's certain areas that they're interested in having included in a sale. And then DNR makes an initial determination of the areas to be included in a sale. And this can include areas requested by companies, and it can also include areas the DNR staff decided to include in the sale. So after this initial determination is made, DNR goes through a land use screening process. And there's published land use screening criteria, this is part of the new process as well. Those screening criteria are written up in a memo, and that's available to the public. There's two parts of the screening. There are certain properties that are entirely excluded from mineral leasing. So, for example, if you've got property in the Boundary Waters, Coopery Wilderness, or that's inside the boundaries of a state park, properties like that are excluded from leasing, and they will not be included in a sale. There are also properties that have special features, like, for example, there might be a state trail on the property, there could be endangered plants on the property, or it could be part of a wildlife management area. These properties aren't included in the lease sale, they are offered for lease. And if the property is leased, that special feature is noted on the lease. When the exploration company files an exploration plan with DNR, which it's required to do under the terms of the lease, DNR can then require that the company take some additional steps to protect that resource. So those lands, the lands are offered for lease, but there are additional steps taken to protect the sensitive features on the properties. DNR also sends out lease sale proposals to its regional offices and asks for input from members of our staff. And attorneys like myself look at the land records and decide which properties the DNR has the right to offer for lease. So after we go through this internal screening process...
How long are the leases bid for?
There are 50-year leases.
They're 50 years.
They're usually terminated earlier than that. Most of them are terminated within a couple of years, but they are 50-year leases.
Are those terminated, then, by the person who owns the lease, or by DNR?
They're usually terminated by the company, by the exploration company.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that's Wayne's farm there in the southeast corner. So I hope it is. But wait, I'm on the southwest one.
Oh, southwest.
So after going through this process, DNR came up with 195,000 acres that DNR is considering offering as part of this upcoming lease sale. You can see that 47,000 of those acres are in Koochichin County, or more than 47,000. You should have a better picture, or better copy of that map in your board packet if you want to take a closer look at it. But you can see that there are areas that are being offered in southeastern Koochichin County, and they are near where there's some current leases.
Of that 47,000, do you have an idea how much of that is private property?
I did do the title work on Koochichin County, and there's not very much at all that isn't owned by either, you know, the state or like a timber company. There aren't, there are very few, very few private owners, you know, owners of farms or smaller acreages. I guess you'd say timber companies are private, but they're large.
Yeah, yeah.
In the Todd Meckler area, too.
So you can see, there's an area in far southeastern Koochichin County where there are about 35 active leases, and the areas that are to the west of that are being included, are proposed to be included in the upcoming lease sale. And then there's also a smaller area in northwestern Koochichin County that's proposed for the upcoming lease sale. So now, if you break down that 47,000 acres, it breaks down into different land classes. Land classes relate to how the state acquired the property. And they're significant because they determine how the revenue is distributed. So if you look at that 47,000 acres, 46% of that is tax forfeited lands. For tax forfeited lands, up to 20% of the revenue is distributed to the minerals management account at the DNR. And I say up to 20% because it's capped at $3 million. So anything above $3 million, those funds are redistributed according to what the land class is. So after that contribution to the minerals management account, the remaining revenues are distributed three-ninths to Koochichin County, two-ninths to the township where the lease is located, and four-ninths to the school district where the lease is located. About 40% of the lands in Koochichin County are school trust lands, and for those, again, up to 20% is distributed to the minerals management account, and 80% to the school trust. And those funds are then distributed to school districts throughout the state. About 8.6% are consolidated conservation lands or Concom lands, and for those, up to 20% of the revenue is distributed to the minerals management account. And then of the remaining funds, five-eighths to Koochichin County and three-eighths to the general fund of the state of Minnesota. I know that doesn't add up to 100%, there's also some smaller land classes, but those are the larger land classes that are involved. So after DNR makes an initial decision of what it's proposing to include in the sale, you know, the next step is to publish a notice of intent to hold a lease sale. And DNR gives prior notice, prior to the publication of the notice of intent, to tribal governments and to local governments like Koochichin County. And DNR starts a process of meeting with, DNR meets with tribal representatives and meets with all the counties where there are lands proposed to be leased, so there's five counties in the sale. The notice of intent has to be published 90 days before the sale. That is published in the ECP Monitor and the State Register. And when that's published, DNR makes a lot of information available to the public on its website. There's a copy of the draft mining unit book. The draft mining unit book lists all the lands that are proposed to be included in the lease sale. There's also an interactive web map, and that allows members of the public to look at lands that are proposed to be included. And you could see all the special features that I was talking about. You could see if there's a trout stream in the area, you know, you could see how close it may be, you know, to different properties, to WMA. That information is all readily accessible on the webpage.
On these leases, is there agreements with property owners for access to, would the company have to go ahead and get these adhesives for access?
You mean if there's a separate surface owner?
Yeah, well, if it's not accessible, if it's, you know, if there are property owners around it, and they need an easement to get across...
Oh, yes, and they can't get in there, yes.
So that would be up to the leasing to get those leases themselves their access.
That is a requirement of our exploration plan.
So they have to be able to...
They have to turn in a plan. One of the requirements is they have to have the right of access.
Right of access, and they have to do that themselves.
They have to.
Excuse me, but what about the surface owner?
Well, there are some cases where the surface is owned separately from the minerals, and in that case, there's a notice given to the surface owner if there is a bid that is received for that property. In only less than 10% of that cases is there a bid received for a particular property. So DNR waits until, sees if it receives a bid, and if a bid is received, then DNR contacts that surface owner and lets them know that a bid has been received. And as I said, in Koochichin County, there are very few situations where if it's separate ownership, it's, you know, it's a private individual or some other smaller owner.
And then to follow up, if the company then later decides to do exploration on that property, our requirement is they have to have an agreement from the owner that's set to get access.
Again, they have to contact the owner 20 days before they get out there, and they have to have an agreement about getting access to the property. And typically, they would negotiate something with the surface owner and probably make a payment in order to get access.
So you don't come in with guns and knives and kick them over their home, right?
No, we don't come in at all, and the company has to negotiate to go in there.
Do you want, you might send that microphone over on the other side of you?
Oh, sure.
So you can both share that. Thank you.
And then the other thing that DNR publishes on its website is the land use screening criteria that we talked about, talking about what areas are excluded from leasing and what areas are subject to special, or what are special features that would be noted on the lease. As I indicated, the notice of intent was published in the State Register and ECP Monitor. DNR also posts information on its website. And if you're interested in receiving updates about metallic mineral leasing, if you'd like to receive updates about, you know, what's going on in terms of the leasing program, you can sign up on the website and receive updates at any time there's additional information posted on the website. DNR also sent the notice of intent to legislators, to the executive council members, and DNR has a list of interested parties who received notice about mining issues. That notice goes out to all of those interested parties, and DNR also issued a press release. So as I indicated, part of the new lease sale process is to have a public input period. So there's a public input period for 60 days in this case, from January 30th until March 31st. Four comments were received, and those are available on the website if you're interested to look at those. The next step is the notice of sale. The notice of sale has to be published 30 days before the sale. DNR will give prior notice to tribal governments and local governments before publishing the notice of sale. The notice of sale will be published, again, in the ECP Monitor and State Register, and also in local newspapers. And again, notice will go out to interested parties. At this point, DNR anticipates the notice of sale may be published in early May, but of course, you know, those dates could change, but that's what we're looking at at this point. The notice of sale is to be published 30 days before the bid opening. So the step after that would be the bid opening. And the bid opening is open to the public. The DNR commissioner receives sealed bids in advance of the bid opening, and then at the appointed time, there will be a bid opening where the commissioner opens the bids and announces, announces the bids. So anyone is welcome to attend that. And then there are a few more steps that happen after the bid opening. DNR makes the results available to members of the public, and it's at this point that DNR contacts surface owners. We were talking earlier about surface owners. At the point if there's a bid received for a certain property, and if the surface is owned separately from the minerals, DNR will contact the surface owner at that point. DNR will let them know that there's been a bid and who the bidding company was, and that the company, you know, would be in touch with them if they are seeking access to the property. And, you know, gives the surface owners an opportunity to attend the executive council meeting or, you know, contact the DNR with any questions. Another step that happens after the bid opening is DNR asks for information about the financial and technical competence of the company to perform under the lease. So the company has to submit financial information within 45 days. You know, the company has to be licensed to do mineral exploration, and has to be, you know, financially competent to perform under the lease, because we want the company to properly do the drilling and properly seal up the boring, and have people who are competent to do that, and the financial merit to do that. So not anyone can get a mineral lease. I mean, I can personally get one, for example. You have to actually, have to actually have some qualifications to get one. So DNR doesn't make the final decisions on mineral leases. DNR goes through all these steps that we've discussed, and then DNR makes a recommendation to the executive council. And it's the executive council that makes the final decision about whether or not to accept bids. And the executive council's meeting is also a public meeting. Anyone is welcome to attend that meeting, and, you know, what the executive council may make by an opportunity, because they may comment, but anyone is welcome to attend that meeting and see what the executive council has to say about the leases. So that's all I have today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Jill, can you, for the benefit of the board, know, like, we, like you mentioned, we currently have 35 leases that are currently active, exploratory leases in the southeast part of the county. Now, as time goes on, like, say we go, we're only like year two into those leases, if I understand it correctly, but as we get into, say, like, year five or year 10, and the company has a request to terminate those leases, the payment to the county on at least the tax forfeited land will increase, so we will, the county should, there shows promise there, there should be an increased payment over time to the county.
Yeah, the payments gradually increase. They start on the $1.15 an acre, and then they gradually step up. And then those are, of course, those are the lease rental payments. I mean, you're not looking at the royalty payments. If you have, you know, an operating mine and you have royalty payments, those are, you know, substantially more, you know, substantially higher amounts. If you want to see what the county's receipts to date in terms of revenue, the board packet has some information. It's, I believe, over $300,000 to date. But again, that's just, you know, that's the lease payments. You know, have an operating mine, those payments are pretty different.
If I could just comment, the formula that Jill explained for each parcel of land, based on the original land type for that parcel, would apply to royalty, and that's really the important thing for the future. If a mine were to be discovered, that mine, you referred to in Canada across the border there, right? That, they're talking about 5 million ounces of gold up there. Gold is $1,250 an ounce today, so that's, you know, rough number, $6 billion. We're looking at approximately, the lease bids are usually 4% right around there, 4% royalty. So you're looking at 10s to $100 million in royalty values for a gold mine. So those are big numbers. They get big real quick. And those numbers that she talked about, that would apply, you know, in those cases to the specific land. So I'm just going to emphasize that.
I'll go out and start cracking rocks and back on the place. My wife and I had an island that we sold recently, but we had it for 12 years up in Canada, 300 miles north, that was part of a mining claim. And what they did over the whole years we owned it, they would get the annual report, and they'd have a meeting up there, actually, at Red Lake, and we went to that a couple of times, very interesting. And they would kind, and I don't know if that was the Crown, the federal government, or the mining operator, I can't remember, but they would disclose, you know, what they're doing, what their plans are for next year, all those types of things. You would be affected if property, although there we had the, we had the mining rights. So I guess I'm just, my question is, in the county, do you guys, are there reports? Do you keep, you know, people updated, or how does that work?
So we do not require the annual report in the way that the Canadian government does that. In Canada, you have to invest so many dollars every year in your claim. That's how their system works, and their report proves that they did the work. We require a rental payment that goes to the local governments. So we have a different system of that. So no, we don't have that part.
It was interesting. One of the things they showed us at one of the annual meetings there, they had a map of, well, of course, Canada and the United States, but where the, where these deposits that they have found sporadically. But it runs in this big, wide sphere that runs from way up in the northeast, or northwest and southeast. And as it comes down out of Canada, right through this area where, you know, this is founded on gold here, and down into the Iron Range, Wisconsin and Michigan. And very interesting, something happened, they were saying, when the earth was formed that caused these precious metals to deposit in that streak. They were showing us the existing mines that were operating throughout that area, even now in the United States. I thought that was kind of interesting.
Yes, and you're exactly right. And that's why the companies are here, looking where they're looking today. So what I was going to do was tell you what the company is looking for that's here, why they're here, where they're looking, and then how they're going to do it. So just so you have an idea of what's going on during the next few years or so. And then what we do to regulate what's going on, so you can always call the DNR to find out if you have questions. So what I've done is lumped these areas. The southern part of York County is part of a larger area of gold exploration. The yellow is the area being offered in the new lease sale, and the orange is the area that is currently already actively being explored, okay? And then in the northwestern part of York County, that's an extension from up in Canada, where you had talked about gold mining and how the trend of gold mines go. It's interesting, that area in the northwestern part of York County, we refer to that as the Birchdale area. And there is a small copper nickel occurrence in the drill core, in our drill core library there. So just wanted you to be aware of that, too. But there's nobody that seems to be searching for more copper nickel there right now. So this is a close-up of the township in the southeast corner of York County, where there are active leases, and then the Lindem's Grove area, which is in St. Louis County. That's, these two areas are actively being explored for gold. This winter, in York County, there were 29 exploratory borings done in 19 different sections, so a total of 29 in a total of 19 different sections in that township there in York County. So I thought you would be interested in where they were proposed. The explorer intended to do 31 drill holes this winter, they only did 29. But here's the locations of the 31, so I'm going to pass that round, leave that. That's an example of the kind of exploration plan that's on our website, so you can get access to that anytime you want. But that's where they drilled this winter, okay? So why are, yes...
Your library that you mentioned, that's kept out in the Iron Range, isn't it?
It's in Hibbing.
In Hibbing, okay, that's what I thought, so. And that's open to the public to go in and look at those?
Yes, we have a lot of professors from universities that come there between, there's way more professors that go there and look at that gold area than anybody else.
Okay.
But yes, you're welcome to go and see that.
Okay.
The reason that companies are exploring for gold in York County this winter is that the price of gold now is around $1,250 an ounce. And I just wanted to tell you that back in the year 2000, this graph starts on the left side, that's January of the year 2000, it was around $350 an ounce. So you can see that the price of gold has gone way up, and exploration companies have every right to think that if they could find a mine here, that with these prices, it would be, you know, would likely be worth mining profitable to mine. So that's why they're here. Exploration methods, so what are they doing in York County? When we talk about remote sensing, we usually talk about measuring things like the earth's magnetic field.
Is that the helicopters that we're flying?
Yes, those are the helicopters, yep. So, you know, we use a compass, and that's the earth's magnetic field pointing north, but the magnetic field really tells us a lot about the bedrock, the solid bedrock under the glacial rim. I'll show you some of this. They're also looking for trace amounts of gold in the landscape. And then the final step is they have to drill into the bedrock. They're looking in the bedrock to try to find gold in a hard rock mine.
Do those companies disclose to the DNR what they find in their test hole?
They do. However, it is confidential as long as they maintain the lease active. So 97% of leases are terminated by year 10 of the lease. The companies have done their work in 10 years, and then they terminate the lease at that point. And that, all that information that you asked about becomes public at that point. So we have volumes of public information from the past, but the current less is, as Convention.
Thank you.
So you probably heard about the airplanes or helicopters flying. I'm going to show you where they were. So Anglo-Gold Ashanti, if you see the blue box here, the blue outline, they flew to collect magnetic data within that box, okay? So they flew back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, approximately, I think it was 200 meters apart, the lines, something like that, very, very close together. Now, you can see where we're offering the yellow in there, right in the middle, around where their current active leases are, which are black. So we're offering a large package of land of yellow in there. And they have already flown the airplane to collect the magnetic data, and I'll show you what that looks like here. Unfortunately, flying an airplane, you cannot find a gold deposit. That doesn't tell you where it is. What that tells you, though, is where it's good fishing. It tells you where it's good to look. This is a computer image of what they found, of what they would find... of what they would find when they fly an airplane. And I know it doesn't mean a lot to you, but it's the iron content of the bedrock. And I'll talk about that a little bit later. This is the one that the state paid for 30 years ago. And it's not very accurate, because 30 years ago, our equipment wasn't very good. So they flew a new one, now with much more modern equipment. So the first step though, is to create an interpretation of the bedrock geology. You can't see the bedrock, because there's 100 feet of glacial sediments on top of it. So you can't see it. It pokes out of the ground every once in a while. By the way, the dots on this map are locations of drill holes that we've got in our drill core library in Hibbing. So we know what there is at those drill holes. The jagged lines, the dragon toothed lines, those are fault zones. So if you've heard of the San Andreas Fault Zone, that's what these lines are indicating on here. Those are good places to look for gold deposits, yes.
What's the difference between the gray dots and the burgundy dots?
I think the gray dots were done by the, either the State of Minnesota or the University of Minnesota. And, for example, the DNR came up into this area and did work, I did it, back in around 1988, somewhere near '89. And we were trying to encourage companies to come in here, so we did some of those.
So the colored?
And then the colored ones, whichever one is the opposite, is done by private explorers. One is one, and the other is...
Thank you.
Yep. So the second step is they're looking for trace amounts of gold in the landscape. And the glaciers came through here, and the one thing they end up doing is burying the bedrock. So in the left-hand side of this, if you see that yellow kind of going down, like veins going downward, that would be trying to represent gold in the solid hard rock bedrock, and that's what a company wants to find. But that might only be 30 feet wide, and it might extend for, say, 100 feet or so in one direction, and 30 feet wide in the other direction. So you don't know when you're walking through the woods where to drill to find that. But when a glacier came along, it acts like a bulldozer, and it can bulldoze the top approximately a few feet, five feet of bedrock off. And it'll spread that out for up to a mile. And we can track on gold what we call a dispersal train bulldozed by the glacier for up to a mile away from where it came from. And that's what the company did this winter. They drilled to obtain samples of the glacial sediment, and they're sending those samples to a specialty lab that will count how many gold grains are in a bucket of about 22 pounds. So on about a 22-pound bucket of sand and gravel and silt, they will try to count. If there's 10 gold grains, there'll be a celebration out of a bucket. So, they do hundreds of those samples. Now, going across the top, there's a picture of a gold grain on the left. And gold is really soft. So it'll get crushed and liberated out of the rock, out of the bedrock, and it'll look like it's crystalline nature for only about 100 meters. And after that, the weight of the glacier on top of it crushes it. And so if you look in the middle of the pictures, the leaf on the very left got folded, you folded your hand over, the leaf got folded over in the middle there. And the crystal got, just the corners got rounded off. And that's about 200 to 500 meters. And so, the geologists will look at the gold grains and estimate how far away from the bedrock source it is. So if you, what you need is 10 gold grains that are pristine, like on the left-hand side, and you're really close. Then, the third step is, the company would want to drill into the bedrock. And they'll do it at an angle, at a diagonal, to try to intercept that gold in the bedrock. So that's the story, it's not magic. This is a picture of them, Anglo Gold Ashanti, working in York County this winter, when they were, while the contractor does the drilling. And to obtain the samples, to try to look for those gold grains, and they have to look at each one and classify it as to whether it's pristine or not. Eventually, we hope that they'll drill into the bedrock. Now, this picture was not taken in York County, but it's in St. Louis County. The picture on the left is in the wintertime. And in the bottom left is a picture of a rock core, what it looks like in a box. And the picture on the right, believe it or not, is the exact same site, looking from a different angle. The exact same site, two years later, in the summertime, of course, after the plants start growing. Now, our inspector goes there, and we try to go back to the second growing season. He has to inspect to see if there's any invasive plants there. And if there are invasive plants growing at the drill site, then we make the explorer hire a contractor to go out there.
Do you fill the drill holes?
The Department of Health has a law, and it's required that they be sealed. And the Department of Health has certain materials that are required to put in there to seal them. The company does that when they're drilling.
Because they may have groundwater, and there's ores or whatever to drill through it?
That's correct. Yep, so they have to be sealed. We make sure that the company files the report. Our inspector goes out to every drill site. And then we make sure that they have filed a report with the Department of Health that describes how they seal. It's the drilling contractor that does a lot of work on it, he's licensed, so we're pretty good.
Are these companies through the DNR exempt from what land they've touched, or they're...
No, they are not exempt from what land they've touched. But most of their work goes on in the wintertime.
So it's frozen?
It's frozen. If you want to keep up with what's going on with this, you can sign up. Jill told you this, so I'm not gonna talk about that. Here's what, on our website, if you just look on our website, here's what the exploration plan summary report. So 20 days before they drill, they have to give us notice. We do a review, we have to review their plan and approve it, or give them conditions for it. And that's what goes on our website. So you would know before they actually drill everything, you know, what they're gonna do. And there's a map that shows, that's that map that I passed around. It shows you exactly where they're gonna drill. This is our Drill Core Library website. So, all these dots on this map are drill cores in our drill core library. I recognize this is York County. But you can move the map around, zoom in just on York County. So you can see where drill holes are, every drill hole in York County, if you want to do that on our website. Just, you don't have to have any kind of software or anything. So we have oversight of mineral exploration. Our inspector goes out to every drill hole that's done. That's our truck in front of the drill rig. I'm not gonna go through this, this is a presentation, so there's a bunch of slides. And it's on our website. If anybody's concerned about this, they certainly can go and read every slide about what is inspected, and all the licenses and everything that we do. And they're welcome to do that, and call us if they have any questions. I'm not gonna go through this whole thing. It's on our website, available. On the left-hand side, you can see a drill pipe sticking out of the ground. We took that picture, the company had, was putting down a magnetic instrument to measure down in the bedrock, the magnetics. This is at Tamrac, Minnesota. And so you can see that there was a drill hole there. And this is out in a wetland. I mean, it's just a big wetland. And then, a summer later, a growing season later, here's the exact same site. Now you can tell exactly where the road is in the wetland, because you can see it in a straight line. But otherwise, the native vegetation grows back, and that's what this is. So I just wanted to show you what it looks like afterwards.
You were here earlier when we were talking about the wetlands in Cooch, Colorado?
Oh, yeah. I heard that.
That's what I thought of that. The two, you get a cut on anything they find here?
No, we don't get any. There were no exploratory borings in the year 2016 in York County, but there were 29 in this winter, starting in 2017. So, nothing on this map.
A couple of years ago, there was lots of leases that were coming up near the park. And I don't know if those, do you remember that?
Voyagers?
Yes. And I don't know if it was in St. Louis County or if it was in Cooch, but I remember the park, but very concerned about it, because we were...
It's my recollection that those leases were not allowed to be done. That's what I seem to recall, after the opposition from the party groups. I think they came out in this public notice, and then... That's what I seem to recall. Could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure it is. So this is what York County looks like if you could take away all of the sand and silt and clay and boulders on top of the bedrock. And just look at the bedrock, this is what your bedrock would look like. And you can see those white boxes down in the bottom, that's where the lease area is being offered. All those white boxes are being offered for lease. And see this yellow that I just put on there? I'll do that one more time. That yellow is where we expect that there's high potential to search for gold, or copper, or nickel, or zinc. So I'll do that one more time, so you can see that yellow. Those areas in York County are where, based on our knowledge and experience, that's where you should expect to see exploration.
What is the purple process, I mean?
Is it purple across the center?
Yeah.
Okay. That is an area that has a high content of iron, probably not much else. And not enough iron to be an iron mine. Now, right in the middle, you can see a big fold, that's, it's all folded there. It points to the east. The earth's crust got all, those layers got all folded in that area, so. Yeah, it's pretty neat, but probably low potential for mine. Okay, so what are they doing when they're searching for gold? I want to use the geyser Old Faithful at Yellowstone National Park. So, five miles down below Old Faithful, there's a hot magma. So the rock is hot, like 900 degrees, seven grade hot molten rock. And I call that hot magma on the bottom, five miles down. So off of that hot magma comes liquids and gases and heat. And those liquids and gases contain acids, natural acids. And they find their way through cracks in the rock that's above them, and they dissolve gold out of that rock. Now it's dissolved in that hot liquid and gases, and it tries to escape up to the surface. And it'll usually try to find a fault zone to find its way up to the top. And then up near the surface, in the top mile or so, we have groundwater. That's where we get our wells. Well, that hot water hits the cold water, and the gold that's dissolved in solution comes out, it precipitates out, it forms veins. So underneath the Old Faithful geyser, federal scientists have taken samples of the surface where it's coming out and shown that it's forming a gold deposit, the Old Faithful geyser. Now, I'm not gonna have the geologists at the exploration company laugh at me and say, "No, they're not looking for a geyser," because they're not. They're not looking for this example of a geyser in York County. The gold deposits in York County formed a few miles down in the ground. It's more complicated, but I can't, it's too hard to explain that. This, you can get an idea of what's going on. And people ask me, "Why do companies need to explore for miles?" Well, this is what they do, okay? The hot magma? Sorry. See that round big circle, kind of down in the magma? Over there, that, that's a hot magma. That was a hot magma that intruded the rocks around it. So that's a granite that intruded into there. And so you could look five miles away from that. But in order to do that, you might want to drill in between and find out where are the rocks that got the gold leached out of them. You assay them, and they have no gold. Well, now maybe you're getting closer, and you want to follow that away, away from that. So there's a method to what they're doing. It's very methodical. And that's what I wanted to try to show you with this cartoon that is pretty porn. But that's the idea. And that explains why, we counted up from 1966 to 2012, how many drill holes were done, and how many 40-acre parcels were they drilled on. Well, it turns out that after 46 years, 2.4% of the parcels got at least one drill hole. So when we do the lease, the company has to have a lease for the right to explore. They can't do anything unless they have a lease. But on 97% of the land, they're probably not gonna show. They have to figure out where they're going. They don't know where they're going and where they're starting from until they do some drilling. But only 2.4% of the parcels, and this is a big number. I mean, after 46 years, the number of parcels that was leased, something like over 120,000 parcels. It was a big number in 46 years, but very few of them actually get drilling. So for the owners of the land on top, they shouldn't be fearful just because of these happens, is what the message is. The other perspective, most drilling in Minnesota is for water wells. This information, this is my last slide, comes from the Department of Health. From the year 2000 through the year 2010, over 11 years, there was 129,000 drill holes in Minnesota. 1,000 of them were for exploratory borings. So exploratory borings are a very small percentage compared to the rest of the activity in Minnesota. Okay, I just wanted to do that and answer any questions they might have.
Very interesting advice. I have a nephew that's an exploration geologist, so I've listened to this story a few times. He's been, he works all over the world. It was incredibly interesting career.
Good, that is, that's really, that's good to know.
Pretty interesting.
Does he work for a company?
Works for a company, but I can't tell you, I don't know what the name of it is. During summer school, he was working out of helicopters in an Arctic Circle. Since he actually got a real job, he's been, most of his, most of the last 15 years in Peru and Thailand, and really exotic places. That's where he's, that's where he's working at, so.
Very interesting.
Yeah, it's incredible.
Do we have any active gold mines in this area at this point?
Not in Minnesota, not in Michigan, not in Wisconsin.
But that was some issue?
There was, there was a gold mine near Marquette, Michigan, called the Ropes Gold Mine, but that was probably 20 years ago, that close up, I would say, maybe longer.
So they really got, other than possibly this copper nickel over northeast, but there's no other precious metals going on in the state right now? Platinum or anything like that?
So, there's another company exploring for gold in Minnesota that's been active. Vermillion Gold, is their name. So, if you know where Gilbert, Minnesota is? Okay, so between Gilbert and Virginia. And the same rocks that you have here, the same age, the same types of rocks, they own, I don't know how many leases. Part of a township, state mineral leases there. And they have identified approximately, border of a gold mine there? They need to find, that's what they tell us. They need to find a lot more ounces of gold there in order to have a dump, to really move forward with that. move forward with that. That's probably the, the best in Minnesota.
Probably right close to where they're doing the road project.
I was going to say, I hope we don't have to move the bridge again.
Yeah. Really.
I'll tell you, if you know where the bicycle trail between Gilbert and Virginia, Blacktop Bicycle Trail, and there are, oh, there used to be a railroad grade, and so they blasted through the rock right there. In the, in the size, if you get on your hands and knees and go right up, put your nose up to that rock, you can see tiny flakes of gold in there.
Okay. They already seem like present.
Present there. But they need to find more to have enough.
You, you're the attorney, is that to keep them out of prison, or?
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, I try to keep them out, or else he's trying to keep me out.
You two work together, that's quite, quite fun. That's, that's interesting.
I have a quick, quick question. I came from the, from the UP where I did some industrial history and archaeology. I don't know if it's still on the books, but in Michigan, there's a difference between surface rights and mineral rights? And you have to have separate, is that in Minnesota as well, or?
That's also true. In Minnesota, when some parcels, mineral rights are severed, it is a separate owner. And other parcels, they're not severed, so then, you know, the surface owners, the owners of surfaces, they didn't have separate minerals. So some properties, if the DNR leases, the DNR's only signaling mineral rights, it's not only surface, they're separate surface owner. We, we, DNR can notify the lease. On other parcels, the DNR, it owns a surface mineral, it's not a separate, so they use the private resources.
I've got a question.
Crystal.
What effect would this have on privately owned land? My family owns land in the Birchdale area. We want to get that. Now, can you sell a lease on our land as privately owned, if it looks like it's possibly?
There are private mineral leases, yes. And there are private owners who sell mineral leases. Companies sometimes acquire leases from the state, sometimes from the federal government, sometimes from private.
But the DNR can't come in and sell a lease on our land as privately owned?
If your minerals are severed, DNR can, and DNR owns the mineral rights, DNR can reseal those rights. But the company, if an exploration company was going to be doing it, exploring on the property, acquired the mineral rights, they would need to give you client notice as the surface owner, and they would need to make arrangements to get access to the property. So that's kind of the situation.
What if they didn't want to give them access?
Well, you, you know, you might be able to block them for a while.
But they can mine on my private property?
Well, no, you'd, you'd have to really give them access. They could acquire mineral rights, they'd have to agree to give them access. And in the case, if there's ever a mine on property, a company actually purchased the property. So, I mean, no, I'm not aware of any situation in Minnesota where.
How do we know if surface rights and subsurface rights are severed?
You can figure that out by coming to the county reporter's office, or looking at abstract titles, you have that. It's a matter of researching the title if you're lucky. And then you can figure it out that way. And how you figure it out would be like if there was a deed at some point where, you know, say a company deeded the property and reserved the mineral rights.
People say that on, okay.
So if precious metal was found on private property, you know, subsurface or whatever, would you get some form of royalty from what was removed? If you were a surface owner, if you'd get nothing out of it? If you retained the land?
No, you, I mean, when, are you asking if there's severed mineral rights? DNR leases the mineral rights, and you're the surface owner?
Yeah.
Well, I think there's two situations, I think. One is the company would have to contact you to get access to do some exploration, so there may be some kind of a payment made. And if the company was going to open a mine, they would acquire the land, and obviously there'd be pay made for that. But no, there wouldn't be a compensation under the mineral lease.
So it's different than Texas, where everybody got rid of the oil wells, correct? I mean, you found a well on your property, they, they received a portion of royalties from that oil.
But the, the practical situation is, if the company has found a $5 billion gold mine, and they want to buy your 40 acres. You, boy, you're in a really, really good situation.
There's going to be a deal.
You negotiate. At least that's what they'll do, is try to, try to buy it.
Have you folks ever been up to Red Lake and seen that mine?
I have been underground in the mines at Red Lake, Ontario. I've been out on an island, I'm trying to think of the island. There's a church gate there, a lab light, lab, lab light.
I've been up, you know, there a lot. What a going community, and they were all to, you know, not all, but any gold was, by Mary Emma's. Amazing.
Very interesting.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
I think you came a couple of years ago to Northern Counties when we were in St. Paul. You gave a presentation. Remember that? We were out for AMC, yeah.
Thank you for, they were in your board pack, but I have a hard copy. And is it okay if we just leave this on the computer?
It is.
Are you, are you based on St. Paul?
Yes, we're both out of St. Paul.
Cover the whole state.
Oh, all right.
There's a lot of people giving us to, who work on mining issues. We are both home.
You travel great with them.
You know, I don't travel too often. I imagine that all went somewhere, used mineral title research. And, you know, sometimes come to kind of deal with that board that you, you know, attorneys and classes them a lot.
Nice, very interesting.
So at some point, I'll find, we'll come to the county and figure out where the mineral rights are.
Yeah.
We'll be for opportunities.
You're kind of, you're a separate division within the DNR.
Yeah, lands and minerals are separate divisions. So we've got about 100 employees, you know, all of the state. So we're, we're a small division that, you know, forestry or parks and rail, but there are a lot there.
Because we, you know, I mean, this is educational for all of us.
Even if it's just.
It's fun for us to get out of the office and come meet some people.
Is this your favorite spot out there?
Yeah, it's pretty come up. I've been, I've been over to it. It's got long drive, and I'm glad that I missed it, because I hear tomorrow morning it's going to snow.
I guess.
Yeah, I heard that, too. Some snow and they wore tomorrow.
We've got a beautiful spring weekend.
It'll be bad.
Just this week it was better.